Yep, here we go. I hereby call the Des Moines City Council meeting to order for September 7th, and with that, will Councilmember Nutting lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Nutting. Let the record reflect that six councilmembers are here. Councilman Oxerger contacted me earlier today, and he is unable to attend. Do I have a motion to excuse?
So moved.
I have Councilmember Nutting, and seconded by Councilmember Steinmetz. All those in favor? Motion passes six zero. Thank you. All right. Is there any correspondence?
None other than the ones already received by council.
Okay, thank you. It's now time for comments from the public, and this comment, public comment, will not be relative to any comments for the public hearing. So if you signed up for the public hearing piece of it, then you will want to move your name to that one. So let me know now. I would just like to remind those participants that any person making personal impertinent or slanderous remarks, or become boisterous, threatening, or personally abusive while addressing the council will be removed from the meeting, and you will have three minutes to speak. So with that being said, we will start with Mr. Bill Lynn Scott.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Councilmember, City Manager, everybody else gathered here tonight. I wanted to comment on a couple of things. I really appreciate the fact we've got some surveys going with the public these days on the comprehensive plan, and also on ways that we might improve our communications in this community. I think that's great. I do hope to see, though, some, you can call them anything you want, a meeting forum where we can have discussions. And I think that would be important, particularly on the comprehensive plan, and also on the one that deals with communications. Likewise, if we go back and look at, I think it was the night that we approved the relief of the bonds, there were several things in there where public input was identified as being a requirement or being sought on some of the projects, such as the steps of the veterans thing. And I want to remind you that, you know, we're still looking for an opportunity to get involved and hear some information from the city and a chance to talk about it. Let's see. One other thing I wanted to say, and I may have lost touch with this, but a couple months ago, I was at the Economic Development Meeting, and the City Manager mentioned they were going to look at the height restrictions or the permitting restrictions in the downtown corridor. And I don't, I haven't heard anything since then, but maybe in the reports tonight, if somebody could give us a little update, are we proceeding with that, or, you know, when might we hear more? Not that I would expect detail tonight, but I was just kind of interested if that's something we're looking at. That's it. Thanks very much for the comment.
Thank you, Mr. Lynn Scott. Moving on to Mr. Michael Rhodes.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Councilors. I'm back. If you recall, a meeting or two ago, maybe three, I was up here talking about reinstalling the gates down the Marina. And this is kind of a report of what's followed, an autumn report of the Marina activities. And one of the reasons I do this here is because this is on television. And I keep encouraging people out there, if you don't want to come here, watch the TV. Since then, we've had a shooting. Guy emptied a clip, took up, took out a couple of windows, and one of those people is with us tonight. Then we had the famous burnout at four o'clock in the morning. Young kid racing through, cutting doughnuts, we used to call them. And on both instances, our police force acted remarkably great. I called in the 911s, I always call them in, and they responded within minutes and put that to rest. So I'm very happy about that. Now, other problems we've had, noise, lots and tons of noise. Sometimes it's at eight o'clock at night, sometimes it's two in the morning. Kids come down there, they party hearty, they're having a great time, and they're playing loud music and blah, blah, blah. I call the police, it's not a priority, I understand that, but they respond when they can, and I'm happy for that. And then the last one is the quarter deck. The quarter deck, I know everybody loves the quarter deck, and I like it too, but I don't like it playing music for a football stadium in that little area. They need to tone it down. We've communicated by emails, we've communicated by telephones, we have gotten absolutely no response. One of the things I'm told is they quote, "Have special permission from the city on special occasion to play as much music as loud as they want." I hope that's not true, because obviously, four days a week is not a special occasion. And I don't believe that to be true, but I want that verified, please. And the other thing is, we've tried, and we need you to take the steps now to contact the quarter deck, because they won't talk to us. And tell them our position, we don't, we're not saying get rid of the music, good gosh, no, but tone it down, that's all we want. So with that, we'll see what happens in the fall and winter, and I'll be back for another report, or call our police if I have to. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rhodes. Moving on to Ms. Susie Jacobs.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council. I'm here as the witness, more than, more than you can imagine. I was sitting in my living room one night, watching television and minding my own business, and I heard five gunshots. About the fourth or the fifth, I, I had my hair up in a ponytail, and it went right through my hair. So it was that far off my head, landed in a lamp, an antique lamp of mine, but freaked me out. I'd just had two knee replacements and a hip replacement, so I hit the floor really fast. It, I couldn't believe it happened. But my, my feeling is, when I moved in there about nine years ago, there was an arm of some sort that blocked that whole area. It started at the end of the cliff house condos, and then it would open up at a certain point in time in the morning. And that was at least something that would stop what comes in down there. But they are crazy. I have to thank the police, they were wonderful. They made two trips, they came back a second time to find the bullet, but it was lodged, as I say, in a lamp, and they were kind enough to leave it for me. It's a good conversation piece for a dinner party. That's all I can say about it. So, thank you.
Yes, we saw the photo, and we sympathize with you. Yeah, I'm glad you can find some humor, and it's what's a very serious issue. And, and thank you. All right, well, Michael, with that, I'm going to turn over the City Manager report.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. One item tonight, we're going to have a second quarter financial report, second quarter of 2023. Invite Jeff Friend, our Finance Director, to come up to the podium and provide for council what that second quarter looks like.
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, Council. Jeff Friend, Finance Director, with the second quarter financial update. We'll jump right in. The first slide shows our budgeted revenues and expenditures. So on the left, the, in bold, the 24.8 million is the budgeted revenue. The 27.2 million is the budgeted expenditures. The dark colors on the bottom of the column show year-to-date totals, so the 13.136 million that shows revenue, that's, we're judging it by the 50% mark of the year, as this is as of June 30th, that would be 6% over the 50%. And as far as the expenditures, the 14.092, which is in the dark area on the right on the expenditures column, that would be about 3% over the 50% mark as of June 30th. Revenue and expenditures, looking at the categories we typically look at in these reports, we have the light green, those are the revenue categories, and the bottom blue bar is the operating expenses. And the revenue is in order of contribution to the general fund, so that we have property taxes, followed by utility taxes and sales tax. You can see the 50% mark with the black line there, judging these categories by halfway through the year. Sales tax is lagging a little bit as of June 30th to budget, budgeted expectations. We'll take a look at that closer in the following slides. And then criminal justice sales tax, that's also sales tax, that is following the same pattern. BNO taxes and franchise fees are over 50%. And then you can see again, the, at the bottom, the operating expenses is a touch over, the 3% over the 50%. And red light running is also over the 50% of budget. Property tax, these charts will break down each quarter and show the previous years. And so the, kind of the teal on the end is 2023, with the green and orange and blue being 2022, 2021, and 2020. So for the second quarter, property taxes, we've said in previous reports, it arrives mostly in the second quarter and fourth quarter. So we see it here arriving, boosting up the general fund in the second quarter with $2.6 million. Utility taxes, we received 1.1 million in utility tax, which looks like it's a bit more than, well, it is, doesn't just look like it, the 977,000 received in the second quarter of the previous year. Regular sales tax, that is still trending in a growth trend. So in the first quarter, it was 912,000, and then in the second quarter, we usually a little over 930,000, but compared to the second quarters and previous years, it's much stronger. So that, you know, those years are closer to the pandemic, so you can see 2020 is quite a bit less. So that kind of shows some, at least, second quarter recovery. And then by category, we have, again, ordered in their contribution, retail, trade, and then followed by services and construction. Retail, trade, and construction showed the greatest amount of increase over the 2022 year-to-date totals. So you can see retail trade was at about 590,000 in 2023, at the same point in time as at 682. Construction also grew about, almost 100,000 in 2022, it was about 398, and then in 2023 is about 490, for a 23% increase. Only ones in decline from the previous year are the miscellaneous and automotive by like $1,200. BNO tax, BNO tax, we received 339,000 in the second quarter, which again is more than each of the second quarters in previous years. And it's a bit less than the first quarter of this year, where we received 390,000, but we have, you know, quarterly files, we have filers, and we also have a number of annual filers. And so the first quarter would reflect annual filing of BNO taxes that we'd receive in January. Franchise fees, these are fees that are subject to agreements, and we received 324,000 in the second quarter. And then, as I previously stated, criminal justice sales tax is a 1% piece of the sales tax, so it follows the same trends. So you can see here also that it was strong in the first quarter with 302,000, and then again, 285,000 in the second quarter, and both of those are greater than the previous year's totals. Red light running, if you recall, in the first quarter, we mentioned that there was a change in collection agencies, and that boosted up the numbers in the first quarter. Those have settled down in the second quarter, so we've received 253,000, which is a bit less than the previous years, but we still are a bit buoyed by the 344,000 in the first quarter. And then the final slide, ending fund balance of the previous year, so we started this year with about seven point, almost 7.8 million dollars, which is 31.3% of recurring operating expenditures. And then the ending fund balance at June 30th was about 6.8 million dollars, and so as a decrease, about $955,000. At the end of the first quarter, that decrease was about 1.68 million, but then now, property tax has been received in the second quarter, so it's been bumped up to a decrease of 955. And that would conclude my report. Is there any questions?
Yeah, thank you, Jeff. Really well done. One of the points I think that's important for the council to be aware, when you see the expenditures exceeding revenue, the balance of that difference comes from the fund balance that we started the year with, which was extremely strong. So what you're seeing in this, and which you'll see more in our budget retreat that next week, is recovery from COVID and trending up on the revenue side that had been seriously decreased across the time of, of that pandemic. So with that, if there are questions.
All right, and we'll start with Councilmember Nutting. I see Deputy Mayor Buckston, I see Councilmember Harrison, and we'll go from there.
Thank you, Mayor. My only question is, is my, the company I work for, just, we received our second quarter earnings today as well. Our earnings, our, our revenue is up by about 4%, but our starts are down for construction. My question, I guess, is, how is construction with, with very few starts and money being as expensive it is to borrow, how, how, do you have an idea of why our construction revenue is up? Is it just pent up, or, or that we have new starts, or, or just finishing out projects? I guess, does that make sense?
Yeah, I would say, like you said, the cost of money, it's, I mean, this is sales tax, and so these are the supplies that are being purchased. And so I think, at least for our numbers, you know, we've got, well, this one-time sales tax, we have a number of projects going on, like Wesley and, and some others. So, yeah, I'm, I'm not sure, is, I'm not as into the granular as that question might be, but.
So it's mostly just finishing out projects?
Was that?
Mostly just finishing out projects that are already started?
Yeah.
Okay.
And Councilmember, I think one thing that's part of the, the regional dynamic is that the South King County is still more attractive relative to land values, construction opportunities, development, all of that, given what Jeff was saying, cost of money has increased, but also this, there's more opportunity down here. So we're, I think, still seeing kind of the remnants of the positive from that.
Thank you, both.
Deputy Mayor Buckston.
Thank you, Mayor. So I wanted to clarify this, this 31.325% when you, of recurring operating expenditures, that's our, another word for that is our reserve, correct?
Right.
And that, that we've got a, a policy that it needs to stay at a minimum of 16.67, correct?
Right, that, I would say that we would refer to that as our unrestricted fund balance,
Okay.
Which is type of reserve, yeah.
Okay. So my question is, could you clarify the value of, of it being so much higher? And the question comes from recommendations from different people in the past, oh, we have so much money, why don't, why don't we just spend it on this, or spend it on that? And so when you see so much reserve over the limitation that we spent, could you clarify the value of?
The, the 16.67% is what was established from the Government Finance Officers Association that was recommended for cities to hold on to, for reserves, you know, for a rainy day and whatnot. So when it's more than that, if the 16.67 is kind of a minimum, then the more you have in your fund balance, the more solvent you are, so it's, the rainy day won't be as bad when it comes along.
And, and also, Deputy Mayor, so the thing to remember always is that these reports are snapshots in time. And so where you see that, whatever the balance is at the end of second quarter, which includes the property tax receipts, at the end of third quarter, you're going to see a significant decrease, where the expenditures have held constant, but the revenues have varied, because there's no influx of money from property tax. And you'll see, those typically are second quarter and fourth quarter, when property tax receipts come in. So I think it's, it's deceptive to, to see that as a permanent feature, where it's in fact a feature in fluctuation.
Councilmember Harris.
Thank you. I have a couple of little tweaky things, but just tagging on to Deputy Mayor, so it would be fair to say that the, you know, the fairly large reserve is not strategic at this time. It's not like we're holding on to money for a particular future spend, or?
Right. Yeah, fund balance is, I mean, it's, it's not just cash, it's also takes into consideration your asset, the difference between your assets and your liabilities, and it's a reflection of that, so it's a reflection of your, the health of the city. But taking it, as Michael said, a snapshot in time, if we're talking third quarter, those numbers won't be as rosy, but what we really kind of want to look at is fourth quarter, when we've had all the revenue and had all the expenditures.
No, I, I, I get it, I'm just, it just sounds like what you're saying is that it's sort of like vitamins, you know, you have a minimum daily requirement, and would it be fair to say that you're trying to keep it far enough above to, you know, not, not for any strategy beyond that, but simply because it's just best practice to keep it where it never, you know, gets to touching that?
Right, that's fair to say.
Okay. So on, on to the, the other stuff, and I don't mean to blindside you, but it's so great to get the report ahead of time. I was struck by the natural gas utility. It's, it's sort of disheartening that people continue to use more, you know, utility, you know, fossil fuels and stuff, but it was up 20%. Is that just, you know, I'm not asking you to, you know, dial into that deep, but is there anything, I didn't notice any construction projects or hookups or whatever?
No, and I have, part of my career has been spent analyzing utility consumption, and one thing would, I would say is, it can be differences in weather. So if it's, you know, you'd have to compare the weather for the same period this year to last year, and that would be one of the places that you would see, because it's consumption and rates. And so if the rates are the same and the consumption changes, then, then this behavioral change for, you know, weather or whatever reason.
Air conditioning?
Yeah.
Something along that, okay. And would it be fair to say that the red light cameras are going to sort of, they've plateaued, and they're going to, you know, they're, this is kind of going to become, the lower levels are going to become normative?
I would say, it's fair to say that we would expect about 1.2 million a year, so I don't expect it to grow, because we want people to be safe, so it's, I think it's functioning as a effective public safety.
But that seems to be kind of the trend, is that it's?
Yeah, I think that's fair to say.
People have sort of learned, and, and let's see here.
Councilmember, if I want to add to that, the red light running, it's interesting, but the benefit, you know, is, is it was a way to hold people accountable for their driving habits, and in the beginning, we generated over two and a half million dollars or, from that. And now, as behavior has changed, we see the benefits of safer roadways, but less revenue, which was ultimately the goal. But structurally, what we've always designed, as Jeff referenced, was that 1.2 million, we felt was a relatively ongoing number, which may decrease even more, but that 1.2 is structurally built into the budget, budget to support police. And then anything above that was used for one-time costs associated with law enforcement. So we're seeing a decline in the ability to do, make one-time purchases for law enforcement, but that 1.2 million remains, at least in the, the near term, a stable number to support, structurally support our police department.
Thank you, that's very helpful. So the leasehold tax was down 20%. Again, you know, I, if I'm blindsiding you, but is that just like Marina occupancy or something?
I'd, I'd.
And if not, we can, you can answer offline.
Yeah, I'd probably have to answer that one offline, but.
And, and two other, hopefully, transfers in, I, you know, that's a very vague thing, but it was 60% off, above budgeted amount, and is that just something normal? Was there something?
Those transfers in are part of the budget, so there can be, for example, trying to think of one off the top of my head.
Yeah, I just wanted to, you know, give you an example.
There's a, an indirect cost allocation, for example, where the other funds pay the general fund for their services, for the services of the accounting, for the services of human resources, and that's scheduled by, by the budget to be transferred in.
Okay, and last but not least, and, you know, this may be the most ignorant question in the world, but on page 11, you know, you're, you've begun displaying a in the world, but on page 11, you know, you've begun displaying a balance of our various bank accounts, which is wonderful, and is there any, you know, way you could provide sort of just a one liner description of the function of each of those accounts? What, you know, you know, why do we have, you know, six as opposed to one or two or...
Well, we have... Councilmember, you know, we can look at, we can look at that. I think it's, that's a function of the finance department's judgment as to the safe holding of the resources, and we can look at what information would be appropriate to provide to council.
Yeah, I just think the public wants to know, you know, this, this bank account holds these kinds of funds, and this, you know, bank account holds those kinds of funds, and, yeah.
Yeah, I think I would, I would say, we have money invested in bonds and we have cash on hand. And so then, I guess the main question would be is, when do we have cash in the LGIP, and when do we have cash in the KeyBank account? And that just relates to operations. We need to make sure we have enough in KeyBank to meet our operational goals, so.
Sure, I just, if, if you could, just have, that was really good, but if you could just have that purpose, and, yeah, you've been a cool audience, thank you.
Councilmember, one last, one last point is that, you know, which you know well, that diversification represents safety.
Yeah, absolutely. I just, I was just curious, because people do ask me that. You know, whenever you change any presentation, obviously the eye is drawn to what's different, so, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Steinmetz.
Yeah, Jeff, I just wanted to follow up a little bit on Councilmember Nutting's comment about the construction, the increase in sales tax. As I understand it, and correct me if I'm wrong, is the sales tax is not necessarily a good proxy for construction starts, but rather the ongoing cost of existing projects. In particular, that increase may have been pushed, and I don't know if you even, this may be too far in the weeds, but there's been inflationary pressures on a lot of the products that are involved in construction projects. And do you know if that accounts for the increase as opposed to necessarily construction starts, or how that might break out?
Yeah, it is a little in the weeds, because I'm, in my, I don't know when necessarily projects begin and end necessarily, but I would say, my expectations from a financial perspective is that those are ongoing projects in a function of inflation. I think the interesting thing now is that we've had inflation, but people keep buying, and so we've seen it grow, and I think that's, that's interesting. I don't, I think Michael has said in the past that I don't think we've seen that before. So, so, yeah, I would assume that they are ongoing projects, as far as I know, that would boost up those sales tax numbers a bit in that category.
Thank you. Councilman Pennington.
Yeah, I would just remind folks that if we go back in the Wayback Machine, for those of you that remember that, only six years ago, our fund balance was at $750,000. $750,000. And, and I'm really proud of the work that the council did at that time, and the staff, and six years later, we have a fund balance of that. And so it really is a testament to the work that everybody did over the last few years to make sure that the city is sustainable and solvent, and, you know, we were looking at which four cities divide the city up into. And, and that's, there's some of you who've been around a while that know that story, and, and it took a lot of work, but it got us to where we're here today. So that foundation of six years ago is, has gone forward, and I'm really proud to be here today to be able to see this type of fund balance. Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. What I noticed, and several of my colleagues caught some of the other questions I had, but cable, telephone, and even franchise fees I saw decrease. I think I know the answer, but could you speak to what you think that might be?
Yeah, telephone tax and cable TV, I, telephone tax decreases are seen by every city, and that's, it's, again, behavior, and it's behavior within the industry. So for telephone tax, you know, people tend to get taxed by minute, but when they get, you know, unlimited plans and they do data, and that decreases the tax. In the same way with cable TV, more and more people are streaming, and so less, fewer people are subscribing to expensive, you know, $200 a month cable packages when they can spend 50 bucks to stream on another, you know, streaming service.
Yeah, definitely, I've seen that, I think the NFL just came out with some information that they're primarily going to streaming services, and you're going to have to pick your games and schedules, so, yeah, it's a wave of the future, and I think cable and home telephones are on the way out. So it's, so the, the other thing I noticed, and it brings back to the red light discussion, is the first two months were, particularly January was well over the previous month. I think February was a little bit above, but I know the subsequent months were definitely less. So it looks like it's the habit, maybe initial commuting, few people got stung, and then now the habit's created itself. So I agree with your 1.2 estimate as we move forward there.
Yeah, I think that also reflects the collections in the first quarter as well, so.
The other thing I'd compliment you is, when you look at the overall numbers on the plan, and when you looked at the half, you guys were not far off, and my compliments to you and your financial team for that.
I'll pass the ball to my friend aside.
And the leadership, please do.
Thanks, Jeff. Mayor, that concludes the Manure Report.
All right, thank you. All right, will the city clerk please read the consent agenda?
Item one, approval of vouchers. Item two, approval of minutes. Item three, national preparedness month proclamation. Item four, childhood cancer awareness proclamation, month proclamation. Item five, joint minor home repair program inter-local agreement. Item six, human services advisory committee appointment, and that concludes the contact calendar, Mayor.
Do you have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Approved, and a second by Councilmember Pennington. Is there any, any item a council member wishes to pull? Councilmember Harris?
Yes, item three, please.
Item three, okay. So we'll be voting on items one, two, four, five, and six. All those in favor, raise your right hand, and it is unanimous, as it should be, those are passed, and we'll move on to item three. Councilmember Harris, you have the floor.
Thank you. I would like to amend the concluding sentence, it's mark one and two. I would like to add a third item, encourage residents to sign up for King County's Code Red Alert System. That's it?
Do I see a second? Dies from lack of a second? All right, we will move forward. Is there anything else that you'd like to add? Councilmember Nutting, go ahead.
I don't have the motion in front of me, but I'm moved to approve the motion pulled.
Right there.
Thank you. To approve the proclamation, support in September as National Preparedness Month.
Do I have a second? Councilmember Steinmetz, a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes 6-0. All right, with that, bear with me, I've got some reading to do. Whereas each year in the United States, more than 3,000 children and youth under the age of 19 are diagnosed with cancer worldwide, and whereas childhood cancer is the number one disease-related cause of death for children in the United States and many other countries. And whereas, although the five-year survival rate for childhood cancers has reached 80%, nearly 2,000 American children under the age of 19 will die each year from cancer, making it the leading killer of children by disease. And whereas, those that do survive will face at least one chronic health condition later on in life. And whereas, the cause of childhood cancer are largely unknown, and more studies are needed to understand which treatments work best for children. And whereas, cancer treatment for children often must differ from traditional adult treatments to take into account children's developmental needs and other factors. And whereas, children, including Leila Beckstrand, is just one of many hundreds of children who have been successfully treated for cancer at Seattle Children's Hospital, and her family now volunteers there to raise awareness and childhood cancers, about childhood cancers. And whereas, Des Moines is a caring community that supports children and families, now therefore, the Des Moines City Council hereby proclaims the month of September as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. Signed this day, Mayor Matt Mahoney. Whereas, National Preparedness Month, occurring annually in September since 9/11, creates an ideal opportunity for every resident to join citizens across the United States in preparing their homes, businesses, and communities for any type of emergency, including natural disasters and potential terrorist attacks. And whereas, planning now before a disaster is the best way to improve the community recovery from disasters. And whereas, when individuals take responsibility for preparing their families and their communities, the chance of survival and return to normalcy following a disaster is greatly increased. And whereas, first responders may not always be able to reach you quickly in an emergency or disaster. And most important, step you can take in helping them is being able to take care of yourself and those in your care for at least a short period of time following an incident. Whereas, during National Preparedness Month, community members are encouraged to take time to prepare yourself and those in your care for emergencies and disasters that can impact our neighborhoods for days at a time. Now therefore, the Des Moines City Council hereby declares September as National Preparedness Month, and urges all Des Moines residents to make sure their families are prepared for an emergency by, by one, prepare a disaster supply kit, and two, create a family emergency plan. Signed this day, Mayor Matt Mahoney. I will now open the public hearing for draft ordinance number 23-042. It's a public hearing on proposed land use and text code amendments for the Business Park Moratorium area and adopting findings of fact. Stat presentation by Community Development Director Denise Lathrop. I will now open the public hearing.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Denise Lathrop, Community Development Director. I also have Leanne Ryan here from Echo Northwest, who is a technical assistance for our market analysis report, if needed. So the purpose for tonight's public hearing is to receive public comment on the draft ordinance number 23021, which is related to the proposed land use and zoning amendments for the moratorium area. And as we previously discussed, a moratorium puts a temporary limitation on development, and it allows communities time to study an area, and for this purpose, it's allowed for by the Growth, by the Growth Management Act in order to, for cities to evaluate and plan for growth in their areas. The moratorium can be in effect for six months, but can be extended to a year. We established this moratorium back in October of '22, and it is set to expire on October 26th of this year. So as we discussed in our earlier public hearings that we've had on this project, we've had significant investment in both transportation and infrastructure improvements that helped to facilitate freight mobility and the buildout of the business park areas on the Port Property and on the properties to the east. Both of those areas are located north of 216th Street. And with the exception of the FAA building, the majority of those uses are office logistics and warehouse-type uses. Collectively, the Business Park, Panatoni's Development to the east, as well as some of the new developments in Sea-Tac to the north, we've exceeded over 3.3 million square feet of this product type, which has exceeded what was anticipated in the city's comprehensive plan, which really assumed a more balanced mix of commercial and business uses, as well as job opportunities. So for example, the pods development in the Business Park, it really generates very few jobs, and it doesn't generate a lot of economic activity in the area as well, regardless that we do get some revenues from that. So Echo Northwest supported this effort and prepared a market analysis and prototype feasibility study, and the study was aimed to answer three primary questions. What types of development are most likely to locate in the study area, given the current zoning and current near-term market conditions? What are the implications of those development types for the city to meet employment targets as outlined in the King County Billable Lands Report? And then what tools could the city employ to better ensure that development in the moratorium area meets our city economic objectives, as well as other objectives? So as part of this study, they looked at nine development types, and found that most types are financially feasible within the area, but the following key findings supported the proposed amendments that we brought to you today. There is demonstrated demand for commercial uses in this part of the city. Townhome development type was the most financially feasible. Multifamily development type was not as feasible as townhome types, but the density that would be allowed would help improve the likelihood of us meeting our housing targets. And then, as I mentioned before, the industrial and manufacturing development sectors have a lower employment densities, and so we have employment targets that we're trying to achieve as well. So this table here just basically sort of shows the, the different prototypes as they measured out, and in consideration of this chart, what we are seeing isn't necessarily the highest rev, what we are seeking isn't necessarily the highest revenue generator, but more cohesive and balanced use based on city goals and objectives to meet both our jobs and, and housing targets. So the big idea or vision for this area, the, the moratorium area provides an opportunity for the city to develop, in partnership with other public resources, private investments, and academic participation, a center for excellence in, excellence in innovation district that supports economic diversification, entrepreneurship, small business development, job creation, social equity, and environmental sustainability. In this slide, we were talking about some of the values that, and opportunities that exist in this proposal, the proposed rezone and zoning amendments. And that would be to establish an innovation district, and that's the, in an area that fronts 216th Street between the post office on the west and 24th Avenue South on the east end. And this would help to limit, and then it also provides the opportunity to limit development on 24th Avenue South of South 216th Street, which wasn't designed to accommodate the heavier truck traffic and higher commercial uses. And then it provides an opportunity to develop workforce housing to the west of the detention ponds, and perhaps partnering with Habitat for Humanity, and provide opportunities to encourage owner-occupied housing. And then opportunities to hands and protect the recreational opportunities that exist in the area, and for the, some of these are the Barnes Creek Trail connectivity with the Des Moines Creek Trail, and then broader connections outside of this area to Highline College and... and regional trail systems. So, what is an innovation district? Well, this is an urban development strategy that aims to help cities regenerate underperforming areas into desirable locations for innovation, creative companies, and workers. It provides a platform for all kinds of activity that stimulates innovation while offering value to entities that drive the economy. So in this situation, we are looking at partnering and collaborating with businesses around the Business Park area to find what businesses do you need, and where proximity to where you are are important. And so we're really starting to collaborate on those fronts. And it's been proven, it's proven as a good solution for cities looking to modernize their economies and pivot from more traditional industrial-based production technol, industrial-based production to more technology and services and other market niches. So, this slide just gives an example of some different innovation districts. I'm not going to read these in particular, but the slide presentation will be available online. And basically, what we found is, a lot of innovation districts tend to be slightly larger geographic areas than what we are proposing, but they have many commonalities. So, a lot of them are focusing on entrepreneurship, creating opportunities for startup businesses. There's an educational component where they're working with universities and educational or trade-type schools to prepare an educated workforce, providing housing, livable wages, and opportunities for success. And then, here are some links to some of the innovation districts that we looked into. And so again, these links will be, people can access these links, and council member can, members can access these links if you're interested in looking into this more detail. So for the proposed amendments, I'm going to start with the preferred land use map amendments. And so, I'm going to use the cursor here. So this is, the comprehensive plan, preferred land use is, it's our land use looking out 20 years. And so the current designations for this area are shown in the map on the top of this figure. And so our proposal is to reclassify, there's two parcels here, and the proposal would be to reclassify these two parcels from Business Park to multifamily classification. And then there's two parcels over here that front 24th Avenue South, and the proposal would also be to reclassify the preferred land use from Business Park to multifamily. We are also adding the innovation district boundary here, which is in that northeast corner of the moratorium study area. So this map, this graphic here shows the proposed zoning amendments. And the proposal here would be, the upper map again is showing the current zoning, and the lower map is showing what we're proposing to change. And the changes are to reclassify this portion of Wash Dot Rideaway from the Business Park Zone to a residential multifamily 2400 Zone. Similarly, over along the east side of this subarea, near, along 24th Avenue South, there's two parcels where we're proposing to change the zoning classification from the Business Park to the RM 2400 Zone. In addition, we are establishing this innovation district overlay. And then we are adding some limitations to the permitted uses table. So that would provide a limitation for automobile parking, self-storage, mini warehouse leasing, and warehouse distribution centers, and home deliveries to those Business Park Zone properties located north of South 216th Street. And the goal here is because the, as many of you know, when the Business Park to the north developed, one of the key factors for that development was, we made the improvements to 24th Avenue South, and the truck access into those areas happened from 24th Avenue South, not on 216th. And similar in this situation, 24th Avenue South at this juncture of 216th, when going south, it becomes a residential collector's street. In addition, so what this limitation would do, we actually added some language in the limitation to allow existing businesses. So, we have the Graycon Building here, and we have the PAC stainless building. So, the footnote would allow those types of businesses to continue to operate, expand, and fulfill their initial goals that they had for their properties when they were permitted. And so that was one of the features we were adding here. And I think I've covered everything on that slide. So one of the things we wanted to touch on were characteristics of the multifamily housing. As part of this, we want to seek private, the areas that we are proposing for rezoning to multifamily would be to seek public-private partnership for investment in workforce housing. We also look for appropriate modifications to the building codes to ensure adequate noise mitigation for residential development. In addition, we would apply the crime prevention through environmental design principles to ensure public safety. And then we would also seek to encourage private ownership through potential partnerships with someone like Habitat for Humanity. And then, another aspect would be looking for incentives to help offset the increased cost of development associated with any noise mitigation. Because as some of you council members who've been here for a long time, we used to have the sound code in place, and there were, you know, we heard a lot of, we got a lot of angst from developers, because it does add quite a bit to the cost of construction, as I'm sure Councilmember Nutting can attest to. And so, you know, we will be looking at ways we can offset those costs, so that we can have the benefit of the noise attenuation for new development in that area. So this next slide just provides an overview of our public process. So back in October '22, we established the moratorium. We had a first hearing on December 8th of 2022, where we provided findings of fact, and the council held a public hearing on this subject to take public comment and testimony. Then again, in April, we held another public hearing to continue the moratorium to October 26th. And then on August 18th, we issued our State Environmental Policy Act Notice of Determination of Nonsignificance in Public Hearing. And that provided a 15-day comment period for the public to provide his comments on the proposed amendments. And that comment period ended on September 1st. So we received five comment letters, and we had a couple of phone communication-type questions, and I'll walk through those in a minute. And then on October 17th, the Commerce 60-day notice period ends. We had initially requested an expedited review, given that the moratorium study is in such a tight compressed timeframe, and that typically allows a 15-day review period by Commerce. But last week, we heard that they had denied that review, so we're going to let that lapse. And so I'll walk through some of the public comments we received. We did receive one letter from Washington Department of Ecology related to the future housing development within this area. The areas within the Tacoma smelter plume, and so may have been contaminated by heavy metals from air emissions from the Asarco smelter, and, which creates human health and environmental risks. So Ecology's comments recommended that the city include requirements for soil sampling and analysis for arsenic, and as a condition of approval prior to land clearing and grading, including sending them results. And it, as part of that process, they may require some soil remediation. And this isn't something that's too uncommon, because we have had projects, I want to think it was Parkside Park, where we had to do soil remediation because of the Tacoma smelter plume. And so, we will look for opportunities. Right now, a lot of, when we are reviewing grading permits and that, we always have sort of a blanket statement about the Tacoma smelter plume. So, in this case, they're recommending us adding some conditions. And we received comments from several property owners. The Graycon G3 Holdings and the PAC stainless SEA Realty provided a joint comment letter, and their main concern is they wanted to preserve their long-term investment and expansion goals for their properties, as they were previously permitted by the city. These two investors and owners were pretty instrumental in sort of creating a vision for the Business Park in this south subarea, and their market prototype has always had a high, a focus on more jobs and higher earning wage and technology-type jobs. We also received a comment letter from the Carrigan Cross and Hempleman Attorneys, which represent the Hill property. And this property is the one located, one of the properties proposed to be rezoned to the residential multifamily 2400. It's located on the south side of the church, off of 24th Avenue South. So, their comments related to the lack of engagement with property owners regarding the rezone, concerns about reclassifying their property as a site-specific rezone, and theirs is not the only property. So we have four different parcels, so we have two, those two are adjacent, and then we have the area to the west. And so we have considered this an area-wide zoning amendment. And then, just wanting to understand the highest and best use for their property, and they are exploring that right now. I know their realtor reached out, and we provided them some information about other areas that are already built out to the RM 2400 Zone, so they can get a sense of what the density might be for, what densities might be possible for their property. And so they are looking at potential alternative zoning classifications that better align with their long-term goals and aspirations for their prop, for their site. Oh, I wanted to jump back up to the Graycon one. We, earlier I mentioned that we added some language to that limitation that would preserve the rights of those existing businesses in that subarea to continue their operations. And then for the Hill property, we had been in discussions with the listing agency back in February and June, and we provided them some background of some of our goals for the moratorium study. But just given the compressed timeline, it was really the public notice of determination and nonsignificance in that comment period, which was sort of opening up the comment period for everybody. And then we received a couple other comments. One comment related to potential impacts to the adjacent parks and trails. No changes are proposed there, and we provided that information. Potential increased traffic, noise, and exposure to toxic chemicals and hazardous waste from development. And our existing regulations really provide the means to evaluate traffic impacts from site-specific developments, as well as any potential environmental impacts. I think with the comment from Ecology, there's an opportunity to maybe provide some additional requirements for that area there. And then we had somebody who had trouble accessing the file from the permit system, and so staff provided them guidance to get them to those files. So with that, that concludes my presentation, and I will leave this motion up.
Mayor, a couple of comments, if I may. I think what's interesting about this, from our perspective, was the opportunity, in a relatively small area, to address a multiplicity of needs for the city. And a couple of those points are that, as Denise talked about growth targets, this has to do both with job creation and with residential densities. And those are required of the city by regional entities, Puget Sound Regional Council, the King County, Countywide Policy Planning, the impact of having the light rail extension within the, or approximate to Des Moines, and requirements associated with the urbanization of this area. And so this was a way to address both housing issues and employment opportunities. And two points I want to make about that. In terms of looking at workforce housing, so we mentioned Habitat for Humanity. That was considered, if possible, that would be a portion, maybe 25%, something like that, that would help have private ownership of dwellings, and, which we consider a good thing. And also that there would be workforce housing, and we would do that in conjunction, or it would be done solely by the private sector. So none of this is designed to happen overnight. This is a long-term change and transition for this area. But the value of the workforce housing is that as we increase retail, as the Marina redevelopment occurs, we increase retail, we increase job opportunities. What we're doing is allowing people who take those jobs to live in the city, have their kids go to our schools, be part of this community, reduce commuting time, wasted time, allow people more time with their families. That has sustainability implications relative to climate change by the reduction in the commute. So we're trying to enhance the sense of community from these opportunities. The other thing I want to mention in that regard is that even though these would change the zoning, no property owner would be under any pressure or requirement to sell or change, my kid will learn what I have, counsel me, to have a, you know, a change in their status. That's entirely up to the private owner. Now, if that, if the owner, if the property changes hands, they want to modify their, what their dwelling or their facility, then that opens the door for compliance with these standards. But up until that point, people, there are no requirements to do anything. And then finally, I want to say that we met with a number of And then finally, I want to say that we met with a number of property owners, tenants. We had extended discussions with Rich Shockley, who's the Small Business Development Center head at Highline College, about ways to engage the public sector, the private sector, and academia in the innovation district, to try and enhance job creation and opportunities, cottage industries for existing businesses, and ways to integrate a multiplicity of opportunities, including enhanced recreational opportunities for our citizens. So that is kind of the gist. Denise, thank you, and Mayor will certainly take questions.
We're gonna, the process is, we're gonna start with the public comment first, then we'll have council questions. All right. So we'll be moving on to public comment. I would like just to remind those participants that any person making personal impertinent or slanderous remarks or who become boisterous, threatening, or personally abusive, I'll address the council, we will move from the meeting. And they'll have three minutes to speak, and we'll start with Mr. Bill Linska.
Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members, everybody here gathered tonight. You don't know what's gonna be on the screen till it's on the screen. So when I signed up, I had one concern particularly in mind. First, I really support the growth in residential structures here in town. It's a city that's gonna grow, and physically, we're booked around us. And so housing and multipurpose or multi-dwelling is important, so I'm all for that. I was concerned about the sound mitigation, and I wasn't sure how that was gonna turn out. And you've got it addressed on the chart, and I think that shows our consistency to what I'd call environmental concerns, whether it be fish, water, or people. And I think that's great. Now, I'm not sure what the details will be, but I'm assuming they're gonna be adequate. I think it's really important that the residents in this town that we build need to be of a quality that provide, you know, that residential welfare, when we know this city has some environmental, what would you call it, elements that should be addressed. And it appears you've done that, so thank you very much for the comment.
Thank you, Mr. Linska. Moving on to Ms. Kailene Moon. I believe she left, so, okay. Moving on to Mr. Simon Upple. Is that, did I pronounce that correctly? And could you state the city you're from, because you don't have to state your address, but just the city?
Sure. Good evening, everybody. My name is Simon Upple, I'm from Seattle. I represent the Hill family who's here today. So we just want to start off by giving some background. So the Hill family was under contract to sell their property that was affected by this moratorium today. It was zoned, it's a zoned business park, as everybody knows, and ultimately, the deal fell through due to this moratorium. So just by wanting to give some other background regarding the market feasibility study, we understand that townhomes has been the, potentially considered as the most financially feasible development option, and that, I think, is due to rising interest rates and construction costs. However, we also want to stress the idea of making decisions, not just based off of today's market conditions, but also thinking about tomorrow and, you know, ahead of time. Something like this is not going to happen, as you stated, you know, overnight. It's gonna take time, and by the time this property may ultimately get developed, market conditions may change, interest rates may come down, constructions costs may come down. In terms of zoning, the idea is to change this property into the residential multifamily 2400, but we would propose that this property be zoned for even higher density, potentially the residential multifamily 1800. Based off of my understanding of the code, this would allow for an additional thirty units on the Hill property, so that would allow the city to meet their housing targets, and would allow developers to have the flexibility to choose what type of development comes to that property. Rather than constraining the Hill family and developers of choosing a certain development, if certain types of uses are allowed, both in the 1800 and the 2400, we want to stress to allow the market to ultimately decide what's maybe best. And so I want to just ask staff and city council to confirm in this study that the types of uses that are allowed in the residential multifamily 1800 are also allowed in the 2400, such as townhomes. And we think that it would ultimately be best for developers and private and public partnerships to conclude to allow what types of development would come in that area. So in closing, I just would encourage the staff to make decisions based off of the long-term housing needs for the city, and think about changing market conditions, and just would like to thank the city council for undertaking this effort. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Upple. Appreciate that. All right. I had somebody sign up, but they cross their name out. Michael, Mr. Michael Rhodes?
Yeah.
Okay. Just making sure. All right. Is there anyone who didn't sign up that wishes to speak? For a second time, is there anyone who didn't sign up that wishes to speak? And for the third and final time, is there anyone who didn't sign up that wishes to speak? Seeing none, now we're gonna turn it over to council for questions. So I see Councilmember Steinmetz first, I see Councilmember Harris, then Deputy Mayor Buxton.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions for staff, just things that I didn't fully understand. Can you tell us what the R24 zone is? We just heard some reference to it, and an R1800 zone. Are there different, are they just merely different levels of density? Are they different types of buildings? What are we talking about here?
Yeah, excuse me, I should have taken a drink of water. They are different levels of density. I should have probably brought the permitted uses table with me, but anyway, you know, they accommodate higher density. So the RM 1800 is a slightly higher density of use. So based on, actually, a question we got before today's hearing, we looked at the RM 2400 zone, and some of the properties that are adjacent to the study area, and the densities for those under the RM 2400 have ranged from like eighteen to twenty-four DUs per acre, dwelling units per acre. But on average, the RM 2400 is about eighteen dwelling units per acre. So as the gentleman just indicated, the RM 1800 would give a little bit higher density, and it would help us in achieving our growth targets. If that's the direction we would go, we would look to see what type of, you know, making sure that there's a variety of uses, like townhomes and that. And I'm pretty sure that the townhome designation, once you get to the townhome zoning, then the RM 2400 allows it, the RM 1800, and I think even the RM 900 as well.
If I may add, council member, you know, this is the first of two readings. So if council was interested in pursuing this, it's something we could bring back at the second reading with some analysis. And on the face of it, I don't see any reason why that wouldn't be a reasonable request. But I won't speak in advance.
Okay, I actually had a follow-up to it, but maybe a bigger analysis, and that was the more density, the higher the traffic impact in the area. Is that generally true, or?
Well, it depends, because our goals are to promote multimodal transportation. And so this area, both of those sites are like six hundred feet from 216th, and so the access to the transit connection, to the light rail station is there. The goal of having workforce housing next to jobs, we're hoping to achieve a little bit of a jobs-to-housing balance, so more people may be walking or using other modes to get to work. So each project that comes in, though, is evaluated for traffic impacts and that, as well as other factors.
Okay, and then just my last question, and maybe it's just my lack of understanding and imagination, but you talked about multifamily being owner-occupied and working with Habitat for Humanity for that. I'm just having a hard time picturing what that means, because I don't think of multifamily dwellings being owner-occupied necessarily. Can you expound on that a little bit, just so I have a good concept of what?
Yeah. So there are, the townhomes are a good example, and it's, townhomes are considered multifamily development. And so you will have individual townhomes that have common walls and a multifamily development. And so, for example, there's a project just at the northwest corner of 216th and Twenty-Fourth Avenue, or I guess it'd be the southeast corner, that has condominiums that are basically townhomes. It's a multifamily development. So then the townhomes allow for owner occupancy.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Steinmetz, and keeping it to questions, too, instead of comments. I think Councilmember Harris was next, and then Deputy Mayor Buxton.
Thank you. So when we're talking about financial feasibility, we're talking about in terms of the developer, right? What's, you know, what's feasible for the builder?
Correct.
Okay. Not what's financially most beneficial to the city in terms of revenues and so on. I just wanted to be clear.
Oh, I'm thinking, maybe I'll clarify that.
Please.
When we talk about financial feasibility, if you're referring to when we were talking about the housing and the incentives and that, it's, that comment was more related to the fact that the noise insulation adds a significant amount to the cost of construction. And so figuring out opportunities to, whether it's grant funding, or other sources, or public-private partnerships, especially with any kind of Habitat for Humanity-type housing, that we can facilitate that to happen and make things pencil out.
Well, no, I just, I'm just trying to define the terms, that's all. So I hear often about the consequences of not meeting, you know, GMA targets or Vision 2050 targets and so on. Specifically, when it comes to jobs, okay, what, I can understand having housing targets, but how, can you give me a specific example of what punishment, for lack of a better word? I always seem to come to the more, you know, the most broad thing. But yeah, what are the penalties for not meeting these targets? A job target?
The process that they have is called reasonable measures. And so when you, when the county goes, well, they actually looked at this when we did our urban growth capacity study, and we had to show why we hadn't met some of our past job growth targets, but we talked about measures that we had taken to provide opportunities. So for example, maybe I'll use housing as an example. So for example, we created Transit Community Zone around Highline College Station area. We increased building heights in the downtown for certain areas of the downtown. We increased some of the building heights in the business parks. So those are reasonable measures that we took forward to help draw development and jobs to our community. And as long as you can demonstrate you've taken a good-faith step to meet your goals, that's what they're looking for.
Got it. Okay, so, yeah, without getting into, so yeah, getting back to the noise thing, which is, I'm not seeing it in the packet, and I'm sorry, you know, Vision and so on, but can you run that down again, what you were thinking about? Because it's not in black and white, as far as I can, or maybe it is, you know, it's on the screen, but it wasn't in the, so I'm nervous about voting for something that isn't actually.
Councilmember Harris, just the question stay.
Yeah, well, there, that is the question, so.
So these were some of the ideas that we came up with, and it was based on comments that were brought forward regarding noise, potential noise impacts. So these were ideas, this will be available on the city's website, since this will go to a second reading.
Yeah, okay, that's, that's all I got. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Buxton.
Thank you, Mayor. So Denise, could you just mention or clarify the consequence with PRC and federal transportation funding, if we don't meet all of our targets for Vision 2050 or 2044? With PSRC, you know how PSRC reviews? That, so could you?
Yes, and for that, it is, again, the reasonable measures, because they're the ones that certify our comprehensive plan. And so they will be reviewing, when we complete the twenty, our comprehensive plan update in 2024, they will be reviewing that and looking to make sure that we have the capacity and the ability to meet our growth and employment targets. And there are periodic check-ins along the way. I mean, we ourselves get that, when we have our, OFM does their population updates, and we get economic updates through PSRC, it gives us a check.
So does that challenge our ability to qualify for grant funding if we don't meet those targets?
That's a good question. There's only been one situation, it was more that we hadn't completed our comp plan update and development regs review when we were going for Public Works Trust Fund. It was right after I started here, and then Commerce says, you gotta have this, you have your development regs done first, before you would be eligible. And so we quickly finished that process. But in this situation, they've come up, their current process for doing your comprehensive plan update includes a development regulatory review as part of that process, so it will all be done when we adopt comprehensive plan updates by the end of 2024.
Okay, thanks. Next question. Could you help define workforce housing? That term's been mentioned several times tonight, just for the public, if you could say, when you, when we say workforce housing, what is that?
It's housing that is affordable to people who are teachers, firefighters, your barista that you get your coffee from every day. You know, it just, it provides sort of a, not necessarily affordable housing, so there's different ranges of affordable housing, and so it can cross over into those different thresholds. But in general, it's providing opportunities for your workers to live in your community. Thank you.
Councilmember Pennington.
Thank you. So a couple of different questions here. The, I've brought up before, the properties on 220th at the north, or I'm sorry, the south end of what would be the business park that's, that will be adjacent to the 220th between like Sixteenth and Nineteenth.
I'm just gonna go.
Yeah, right in there. And so I had a concern about the ability for the roadway to be able to handle commercial traffic coming out of there. Is there something in place? I mean, will the, will the access be to 216th, or will it go, will it have access to 220th?
Well, there's already a capital improvement program that, or transportation improvement program that would extend Sixteenth Avenue South to connect to the south. But in terms of these business park uses that are currently there, those already have access off of Twentieth Avenue South to 216th, that is signalized intersection. We aren't proposing any punchouts in this area to the south, right, in this area.
Okay. And then I know other projects in the past, such as when we built the big multifamily up on College Way, there's, between the neighborhoods, there's a green belt, and would that be in place for this here, off of 220th, between the business park and whatever gets, and what gets developed?
We have already development standards in place.
Right.
That, that provide landscaping and screening. -that, that provide landscaping and screening. And we found that to be very effective in providing that buffer between different intensities of uses. So, for example, PAC stainless, there's a multifamily development right next to it. Um, so yeah, we have the mechanisms already in our development regulations to address those proximity concerns.
Okay, great. Now, um-
Councilmember, one, one other comment about that. And it's a great comment that you make because our question, because, um, in reading the, in looking at this, it seemed it would be, you know, much more appropriate for residential to border the recreational opportunities than to have trucks or business park or any of that, and also fulfill the, the purpose of seeking a balance.
Right. Thank you. Um, and then relative to the, the property, the Hill property the gentleman spoke to, is that the two properties or is that one property?
It's just one. Um, I'm gonna run my cursor. In general, I don't see, uh, it's hard to see the property line. I think it's sort of runs-
Okay.
-about right here. And then there's the church property right to the north.
Okay. And so the properties, and I think I can see a little bit on yours, but the properties across 24th Avenue, are those 1800 or 2400?
Um, the, the one in the northeast is 1800 and this area to the sort of directly east and to the south, the lighter beige, um, I think that's an our residential, single-family 9,600 zone. We actually had, um, the property owner for this piece here, as well as the property owner for this piece over here. Um, both of those had come in and talked about wanting to increase the density on their properties and a lot of people have been asking about the middle housing and so we're, we're working on that piece. So there may be conversations down the road.
So if, so I guess my question, uh, the, the difference and, um, I'll, I'll make my, my opinion later, but the, so there's, um, a commensurate use between the 1800 and the 2400 on 24th Avenue between 216th and down to 220th?
Well, it's just these two properties. There's an adjacent property on this northeast corner.
Right, and that's what I'm talking about.
Yeah, it's a-
The corridor along 24th Avenue designed, 24th Avenue designed for a, for, uh, not commercial use, but more residential neighborhood use. And so my question is, is, um, if this was zoned 1800 or 2400, it would be commensurate with the, the rest of the use and, and the infrastructure would support that?
I mean, each development has to demonstrate that there's adequate infrastructure, but in general, yes. And because obviously when this was originally zoned as business park at the time, many years ago, they looked at, at the infrastructure to support that. So, um, and, and I know the zoning along that corridor varies. There's a lot of multifamily townhomes, some higher density single families. So it fits within that character.
All right, thank you.
So I have a, I have a couple of questions. So what you said was that the businesses in the business park area will be able to maintain or grow as long as they stay within accordance of our code and so forth?
Yes.
Okay. And that Stephen J. Underwood Park, the Activity Center, and the proposed trail are dedicated to uses by our public, by our residents.
That's the, we aren't making any changes to those uses.
I know, just asking the obvious here. Um, and that, um, as far as the sound package and noise mitigation, that was referred to the Economic Development Department and Michael, I understand, is it that we are, that in 2024, that'll be a portion of the work plan for the Economic Department Development-
Committee.
Committee to work on that?
Yes.
Okay. And the last one I have is innovative district. Um, is there any recommendations when we review the, um, links that you gave us that we should be particularly looking at that apply to what you're proposing in that particular area as far as components or aspects?
Mayor, I'm gonna answer that before Denise. One of the things that, in the language of the, um, of this presentation, I believe in the ordinance, are looking at performance standards. And performance standards from the perspective of what are the characteristics that we're seeking to accomplish in that incubi- in that innovation district. And so I think that council would be well advised to take a look at those. And if you have ideas as to things you'd specifically like to see, bring them to the second reading of this. And, um, you know, we can flesh out or extend them to us in advance and we can flesh out somewhat what those performance standards, in other words, what we're trying to accomplish in that innovation district.
That's exactly the answer I was looking for. Thank you. Question, uh, Councilmember Steinmetz.
Yeah, I've just got a, a couple of things I wanted to follow up on. I understand if we don't, on the second reading, not now, not tonight, if we don't pass the zoning change, then everything stays, it's currently a business park, stays a business park, uh, zoning. Um, and on the, what would be the northwest business park zoning off of 216th, there you go. Um, is there access to 216th there? Or is that gonna require, I don't, I don't see how you get onto that property.
Yeah, it's, it may be that they have to construct some of the frontage improvements to gain access through this area. I mean, it, it all will depend on the timing for a development proposal to come in, but we would evaluate traffic and transportation access at that time.
Now, thi- this may be more for our city attorney. Uh, if we don't pass a zoning change, but can vote to continue the moratorium, are there consequences to that? And can you expound on what those consequences might be?
Yeah, so a moratorium is a prohibition on development, right? That's what this council passed 11 months ago. So every property owner that you see up there has been prohibited from doing what they want with their property for the last 11 months. So under state law, we can do it and we provided that rationale. Um, but, you know, once you get out past a year, you know, you really need a concrete, um, and substantial basis to keep continuing this. Cause the whole point is to put it in place, do your studies and act on it. Because the longer we hold these properties, um, without being able to do what they want, you know, they start hiring attorneys. So, you know. Um, but no, I mean, a year is a reasonable, but reasonable basis, um, a length of time. Um, and you can tell from this presentation that staff has been very busy during that time and we've created recommendations. And so based on those, our, our, our recommendation would be for council to act on this before the moratorium expires, uh, and not kind of push us into a gray area where we're, um, we're out past a year.
Would, would creating new building codes, in particular sound building codes, be considered a justifiable, um, reason for extending a moratorium? Or would that not, would, would the court stand, frown upon that?
Well, I mean, it was probably something that could have been considered towards the beginning. Um, there are, um, you know, noise code isn't necessarily a zoning issue, but more of a building issue. Um, and so, you know, there's other mechanisms to enact, you know, uh, building regulations, um, that wouldn't involve a moratorium. Um, and they can be done fairly quickly. Um, but, yeah, that's where we are at this point.
Thank you. Councilmember Harris and then Deputy Mayor Buxton for your second.
Thank you. Uh, yeah, uh, so, uh, when is the next meeting scheduled after the 14th?
So we are having council, um, move it to a second reading on October 19th.
No, that, that's not my question. I'm, I'm just, I'm not looking at the c- city calendar.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The council meeting.
September 28th.
Okay. Um, so is there, uh, and this is for the city attorney, is there any reason that we could simply, um, vote no on this and then bring it back as a first public hearing on the 14th or the 28th?
Uh, the council can vote however they would like.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm asking if there is any legal or, you know, parliamentary impediment to dropping this now and then bringing back the whole issue. Um, I, it is my feeling that we have-
Uh, just questions here, sir.
There is a question coming.
Just ask the question, please.
Mayor, please, once in a while, you have to be able-
Sir, you're out of order. You just-
You have to be able to prepare your question.
Public hearing requires questions only and that's what I called out.
There is a question coming, sir.
Please ask the question. That's what this hearing is for.
I have to be able to have a-
Sir, sir, you have, ask your question or I'll move on to the next person.
There we are.
All right, moving on to Deputy Mayor Buxton.
Thank you, Mayor.
What's wrong with me?
Sir, you're out of order. Thank you. Deputy Mayor Buxton, you may begin.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to quickly revisit the type of housing question again just for clarity. That, uh, so is it true that usually the 2400, 1800, 7,200, 9,200 refers to the square footage of the lot that you're creating? RS 7,200, single-family residential, 7,200 square feet?
Um, when you get to the multifamily zone, it's the dwelling units per square footage. So it would be, you might have a three-acre lot that gets developed with a multifamily development. And so the number of dwelling units, you have one dwelling unit per, um, 2,400 square feet. And so it varies across the board what that will be, depending on the site size and the development proposal, whether it's townhomes or multifamily.
Okay, and so when you've got a number like that, okay, so if you were to zone it to allow apartment buildings where units did not touch the ground, would it have a different kind of number? In other words, are we only zoning this for townhomes, townhome type dwellings where each unit touches the ground? Or does this also open up for multi-level apartments?
Yeah, it's the multifamily zone allows for apartments, townhomes.
Okay, two levels.
Yeah, yeah. All right. Thank you.
Is the height of those 35 feet?
It is. Um, one thing in talking to Echo Northwest, um, just for background, is currently the market really, um, for cost of construction and that, the, a four, a four-story development is probably more marketable than what the 35 feet allows for. And so that's just information.
Thank you. Is either council member that has another second pass have a question? Councilwoman Pennington?
Yeah, um, so is the, um, it, y- you had made a statement that if we wanted more information on the, the 18 versus 24, we could have that at, at another, at a second reading?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember, we try to provide that in advance. The council could review that.
Right, I, I appreciate that. I just, I wanted to be sure because I'll make another statement after I, this.
All right. Um, that can, that concludes our questions. I'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion? Councilmember Nutting?
I move to pass Draft Ordinance Number 23 dash 042, adopting comprehensive plan and text code amendments and findings of fact for the moratorium area to a second reading on October 19th, 2023, or as soon thereafter, the matter may be heard.
Second. I have a second by Councilmember Pennington. All right, before we take a vote, go ahead.
I would, I'd just like to comment that I would like more information prior to the meeting about the 2,400 versus the 1,800.
Yeah, yes.
And I, I think that's fair.
So this, that's open the floor for discussion before we take the vote, so-
That's my comment.
Okay, Councilmember Nutting?
Thank you.
Councilmember Harris?
Uh, I want to apologize to the audience for raising my voice. I don't usually do that. However, um, there is this notion of just disparagement that, um, you know, you just can't take it. Um, I will vote no on this and I encourage my colleagues to do the same, simply because you're hearing a recurring theme, which is not enough information in advance. And there's simply no reason why, frankly, we're getting the inform, the preparatory information now that could have and should have been in the packet. And then by voting no now, we can revisit this and basically restart it again at our next meeting. And I'm sure that if the information were provided, you know, it would be, um, a very easy yes for all of us. But, um, I have, uh, there are simply too many pieces of information that have been revealed on the fly once again. And, um, as a matter of, uh, just principle and good practice, I'm not here to make these kinds of really big decisions, um, on the fly. It is inappropriate to pass it forward to a second reading just with the assumption that something to do with sound code might happen, um, that something to do with, you know, density might happen. Um, this is stuff that you have your ducks in a row ahead of time. And that's not being, you know, critical of anybody. It's just that it should have been presented ahead of time, even the examples of, I, I, I challenge anyone to, um, tell me what an innovation district entails. Um, and so, yeah, vote no and then, um, bring it back again at our next meeting and, um, make it easier to get to yes. Thank you.
Any other comments? Deputy Mayor Buxton?
Uh, tempted to comment on the voting no item. I honestly think, don't think, if you, if we all voted no, it's, I don't think you can bring it back. I think you have to do something like table it, but, you know, that would be another issue. Also wanted to comment that innovation district, if you Google it, there's lots of really great examples. I learned a lot, uh, by looking up innovation districts. I am impressed that we have such a forward-thinking staff that they would know about this and even do the work, as the city manager reported, to, um, bring together the kind of partners that bring success to an innovation district nationwide. It's kind of a, it's an up-and-coming way to address some of the biggest challenges that urban environments have, to, uh, create this workforce, workforce housing, reduced commuting, multimodal transportation, all of that, academia, um, innovations, a business incubator. I mean, all of those things, it's fan, I think it's fantastic that our staff is coming forward with, um, this type, kind of opportunity to our city. Um, so, and if we're successful, what a great entry to our city, right? An entry corridor. So, um, another comment is the residential uses. If this succeeds on 24th, work to ensure safe routes to school. That, we have on our plan to, uh, continue our safe routes to school program in three phases up there. And you've got lots of kids walking to and from. And I think, uh, this helps protect that and in further it, um, supports our, any future application that we would have for grant funding for that. Gosh, I, I appreciate the preparation for more residential next to recreation like the trail and, and this beautiful park that we have up there, Stephen J. Anyway, I, I will probably have more comments at the next time. We have a plentiful amount of time to do research and ask questions between now and the 19th. So, uh, thank you very much.
Councilwoman Steinmetz.
Yeah, I just, I, I'd like to meet a couple of the objections that are being raised here. Um, as far as the innovation zones, uh, have occurred, that was in the packet. If there was some question about that, you could easily have looked it up. I've actually been to the innovation zone in the port of, uh, Bellingham. They've done a really nice job of creating sort of a, a walking area with some restaurants, retail shops, but also it fits into the port and there are a lot of, uh, businesses up there that support the big job providers of the port. And, and it's really a nice thing. Uh, so I don't think this is some great mystery if, um, you know, you put at least a little bit of effort into finding out what that term meant. a little bit of effort into finding out what that term meant. Um, you know, the, the only real issue here is, uh, you know, the sound code, or, that has been proposed a long time ago, and we agreed to put on the work plan, um, before we even started this discussion of what the zoning changes, uh, might start. So, nobody's setting things aside, uh, in order to, you know, push it off. That is part of the work plan, and I really don't think that even if we are, uh, changing the zoning ultimately here, that by the time somebody puts a project together, that we're, uh, not going to have that, uh, something addressing that in our, in our building codes. So, uh, I don't think that this is going to create some situation where a, um, you know, a mad developer comes in and immediately wants to build the cheapest housing they can and has no care for the noise, because frankly, if it's too noisy, the market will respond, and they won't be able to rent it out. Um, you know, and then.
Go ahead, continue.
Yeah, and, and then lastly, there, there are serious repercussions to, um, everybody voting no. That's a decision of the council that ends the topic. Uh, it's not something that you can just casually set aside and bring up next week, nor should it be that. Uh, parliamentary procedure doesn't allow for things like that. Uh, I don't know the specifics in our, uh, in our code, but I, I think there is an impediment to bringing some, you know, having a, a vote where everybody votes no, and then bringing it up, uh, again. That's just simply not the way a functioning legislative body like ours is supposed to work. Uh, and as a consequence, you know, I think we need to move this on, we have, uh, some time to the second reading, we look forward to everybody's input on that. Uh, there is lots of information, uh, to be understood. I found the packet, when I read it through, was very informative about what was going on. I had some familiarity with some of the topics, but not all of them. And, um, you know, so I feel that I'm prepared at this point, uh, to vote yes, and to move this forward, uh, through the process. Thank you.
Councilmember Pennington, and then you for your second time, Councilmember Harris.
All right, thank you, Mayor. No, I agree with, with, uh, Councilmember, uh, Steinmetz and, and Buxton. I, I, staff has put a lot of work in here, there's a lot of information that was given us, and, and I feel very well-prepared. Um, I support, uh, Councilmembers Nutting's request to, to look at the 1,800 versus 2,400. I think that's reasonable to do that, I think that is commensurate with what's the, that was, you know, along the 24th Avenue corridor. So I think, I think that would be a reasonable thing. I'm very pleased that, that the neighborhood off of 220th will be protected, and, and that we have the, the green space, and, and we won't have the heavy truck traffic going through the neighborhoods, going by the schools, tearing up the roads. Um, and so I'm gonna, I'll be supporting this, this motion.
Councilmember Harris, your second time.
The tone I hear here, um, you could substitute a couple of nouns, and it would basically be the discussion that we've heard over the years regarding the Marina. Um, and, uh, you know, there's, there's been a lot of information and a lot of public engagement, and a lot, and it's like, yeah, okay. Um, I, uh, was here when the, uh, city, uh, created the sound code at the behest of the FAA to get the port packages, and I was at the meeting when it was rescinded, and I recall the discussion about the, um, you know, basically, um, windows and, and construction practices are so good now that, um, you don't even need it. And my thought at the time was, well, if they're already so good, then why do you need to remove it? Well, the truth is, is that when you removed it, then people did use, uh, lower-quality standards. Um, you need certain basics of code for plumbing, electrical, noise, um, otherwise people will not, um, use the best products. And the code that was instituted in 2007 was good for 2007. That's like a baseline. The quality of, uh, products in windows, insulation, doors and stuff is, um, it's the difference between like golf clubs, if you bought them today, or computers, they're much better. So you could easily, uh, make, make it stiffer, and it would still be within the, uh, ability of builders. Um, you have to have certain basics, it's just, that's just the, the deal. Um, I would just, you know, say that, uh, you, you have to, it, it all comes down to trust, and I would like to see examples before voting. It comes down to me to, um, an innovation district can mean whatever you want it to mean. It can be retail restaurants, it can be, uh, you know, an educational hub, it can be, it can be a, a pizza delivery system. You, there should have been at least some specific examples that correlate with that amount of land and our logistics, transportation goals, um, just as a, as a baseline for having an intelligent discussion. And, you know, uh, and regarding the kerfuffle before, uh, that's exactly, what I was exactly trying to get to is, um, I don't think there's any parliamentary impediment to dropping an item and then bringing the same thing back a week later. I think this is a question of people wanting to appear like good manners, or something like that, which is irrelevant to me. To me, you know, okay, vote no, and then bring it back next week, no harm, no foul. And that should be the way that we look at this. It's a meeting where you accomplish the best goals, and it's not about, you know, okay, appearances, and that's it.
Um, I think this process, uh, worked effectively. The first hearing is always, there's always discovery, and I thought, Mr. Upel, you're in your, who you represent, your family that you're representing, came up with a very interesting suggestion that we're going to look at. And, uh, obviously, the innovative district things, I, I did my research too, and I found some exciting opportunities there, and as the city manager mentioned, that, uh, as we look and review, and we have some suggestions, to forward those on his way as potential incorporation. The parks stay the same, the businesses still have that opportunity that are currently there. As far as the sound code, holding this zoning hostage for sound code, uh, Ms. Lathrop did a great explanation of talking about potential ways we could work with developers and so forth to cut costs and things like that, that offset some of the noise impacts. Um, and additionally, what we're going to do in this zone, we need to do in the rest of the city as well, so it needs to be thoughtful. In addition, um, to something that Councilmember Harris mentioned, that the quality of ido, the code in, uh, building, building materials has improved, and this gives us opportunity to incorporate some of those types of things in this, in the sound package piece, which will be handled in the appropriate place in the economic development, and then we'll, we'll have a comprehensive, well-thought-out, um, code for that in 2024. Uh, so I support this, and, uh, and, uh, from that, I think, uh, we'll go ahead and take a vote. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. I see Councilmember Pennington, I see Councilmember Steinmetz, I see Deputy Mayor Buxton, Councilmember Nutting, and myself, all those opposed, Councilmember Harris. The motion passes, and it will move to October 19th, five to one. All right. All right, new business. This, this is the time for the sole purpose of proposing new business items that have not previously been before the council for discussion on a future agenda. This is not a time for questions about old business. Councilmembers can submit questions or seek updates on previously discussed business to the city manager at any time. Do any councilmembers have new business they would like to propose? I see Councilmember Nutting.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, with your indulgence, I'd like to propose a few things with some, um, explanation behind them, um, so I could either wait and tell my comments later, or I can do that now.
Just tell us what your proposal is, and then.
My proposal is, is seen as though, um, we have a couple of, um, uh, proclamations on the consent agenda that were read, I'd like to propose two proclamations, um, one being, um, the week of, the fourth, September 4th through the 9th being construction, suicide prevention week, and also September being, um, suicide prevention month. Um, my argument for that is, is, um, the construction, um, industry is four times higher with suicide than any other, um, job, the second highest, um, in the United States. Um, in Washington State, we lost six people to normal construction deaths last year. Um, in Washington State, we lost 125 people to construction suicide deaths last year, not including those that attempted suicide and failed. Um, so, seen as though Mental Health Month was last month, I, I think those proclamations should be passed.
Councilmember Nutting, I, what I propose is that, uh, we work with the chief administration officer. Uh, a lot of times, there's, um, proclamations, I'd like to be a little bit more encompassing than just construction, um, but maybe there's, there's a couple of formats out there that would be acceptable, and that we could revisit, we might necessarily not be in the beginning of the month, it might be the 14th, it might be the 28th.
So, but, but this week is, from the 4th through the 9th is construction, suicide awareness week, and this month is suicide prevention awareness month. So, whether or not it comes back, but I'd, I'd like to have a proclamation for both of those as well. Thank you.
It's acceptable, we look at it, and see if we can bring it to the next meeting. We got three, so we'll do that. All right, any other new business?
Thank you.
Seeing none, we'll move on to board and committee reports, and Councilmember Nutting, you're the first one.
I don't have any, uh, board or committee reports, I just want to remind everybody that the 6th in the Highline School District was, uh, the first day of school. Um, please pay attention to your 20 mile an hour school zones, um, the children are out there having fun, enjoying themselves, and, um, horseplay typically ensues, um, so, uh, you're an adult, you're behind a vehicle, so please pay attention to those littles. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to Mr., Councilmember Harris.
Thank you. Uh, I attended Carol Davis' funeral, one of the founders of, uh, the Food Bank, and again, I want to extend my condolences to her husband Eldon, who has been a very thoughtful commenter at these meetings over the years, especially concerning the Marina. Um, I've, uh, met with several members of the defenders of North Sea-Tac Park and advocacy group that, um, well, they're, they've had some good success with North Sea-Tac Park, um, keeping the forest from being, um, made part of the, uh, ports, airport expansion, and, uh, I have, uh, been pleased to hear that they are considering, um, increasing their mission to encompass the tree canopy all around the airport. They understand now that, um, basically, the Des Moines Creek Business Park, um, the, was also part of the same land buy by the FAA, called the Sea-Tac Communities Plan. Um, the idea was to create a noise buffer around the entirety of the airport, not only as a noise buffer, but also as an environmental buffer. Um, and, well, the west side of that buffer became the third runway, so, oops, um, and the south became the, uh, Des Moines Creek Business Park, uh, so the total loss in trees is at least 24,000, um, at current, uh, standing, and, um, you know, it's been replaced by impermeable surfaces. And, uh, I am so persnickety about this rezoning thing, because whenever I hear anything concerning the Des Moines Creek Business Park, it was, for years, pre, previous councils just went on about how it was going to be the economic engine of this city, and so on and so forth, and it wasn't. And I'll tell you what it was, it was something that looked shiny, but did not bring in money to this city. It underperforms, it's this tax-exempt thing, because people wanted something that felt safe. Okay, and there's nothing safer than an FAA building, I guess. Um, so I have become skeptical of any land development and rezones, um, without strong prior evidence that they will bring in the revenues, because land is revenue, to anyone watching. Land is what drives the services that people want in this town. Whenever you talk about a park, or a program for kids, or road improvements, or whatever, if the land doesn't bring in those taxes, that's why you cannot get there. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Harris. Moving on to Councilmember Pennington.
Thank you, Mayor. First off, thank everybody who showed up this evening and, and, uh, said their piece, it's always great to have folks here and, and share opinions, and, and we get that information, and it's the best way that you can have an impact on your local government. Uh, second off, uh, staff, thank you all very much for the, for the presentation and the work you did, there's a lot of work in this that, that we saw tonight, and so thank you for that. Um, and then on September 11th, for those that would like to attend, starting at 1:00 PM to 2:30, out at Fire Station 64, located in Federal Way, off of 320th, just east of I-5, there will be a, uh, 9/11, a remembrance, uh, service there, so you're all welcome to attend. And yes, Councilmember Harris, the FAA building is a darn safe building, and I've been in it a few times.
Thank you, Councilmember Pennington. Moving on to Councilwoman Steinmetz.
All right, um, the last, uh, weekend or week has, has been a lot of community building, uh, events that I've attended, that I've had a really good time. Uh, RamFest, uh, was held down at the Marina, which is all about, you know, the Mount Rainier Rams in the beginning of the, uh, school year, a lot of emphasis placed on the football team, and that's great, and, um, you know, Coach Mack does a wonderful job. Uh, I also got to meet a, a strength coach there, who was a former shot putter and, um, discus thrower, which are, uh, what I did in college as well. Uh, and so it was, it was really just kind of a, a great opportunity to meet people, talk to people, get excited about, uh, the Mount Rainier Rams, even though my kids went the Federal Way. Um, but, at least they're both kind of blue and white, so. Uh, secondly is, uh, on Saturday morning, um, I, I joined with several other people, uh, and did yoga down at Soundview Park on the deck there, I've done that a couple of times now, it's just a wonderful location. Uh, I think it's every other Saturday, there's a class that, that is held down there, uh, and it's just a gorgeous place to do it, and, I don't know, there were probably 20 people that showed up, uh, for the class, there have been more, uh, it's been more well-attended, but as you get later in the summer, that's harder. Uh, and then lastly, uh, again, I went to the market, you know, the farmer's market that we have is really quite outstanding compared to a lot of other markets, I, I think we have a regular group that you can count on being there, which is nice. There are always, there's always something new that I hadn't seen before, uh, down at the market, and, um, you know, it was just really, uh, it, it's a great thing. So, uh, we need to enjoy it while it's still here, because the market's going to go away sometime pretty soon, but, um.
I mean, not permanently.
Not permanently, sorry. No, no, I didn't mean to suggest that. Okay. But, um, you know, so I appreciate a lot of the public things that we do in this city that we have, uh, for our citizens, uh, and, you know, it, it's a lot of community building. Thank you, that's all.
Thank you, Councilwoman Steinmetz. Moving on to Deputy Mayor Buxton.
Thank you, Mary. Mary, sorry. Uh, thank you for the market report, appreciate that, I was going to mention that, uh, and also about RamFest, one thing that, uh, Councilmember Steinmetz did not mention about RamFest is that the mayor was actually in the dunk tank, and, uh, they gave me an opportunity to throw the ball, and I got it on first shot, dunked the man. Just wanted to brag about that a little bit. That was a great opportunity, it's an annual event, it's growing every year, and what a great way to celebrate our, especially our young people in this community, as they work toward team-building, and really preparation for being great citizens in our community. So, yeah, I loved that opportunity. Um, been busy about, in the region, and in our community, with lots of meetings, but, uh, this one was really fun. So last night, I attended, um, uh, Sound Cities Association hosted an event, and I think many of you already know that FIFA is coming to town in 2026, and Seattle's going And Seattle's going to host a segment of the World Cup. So I got a special, what do you call these? Sorry, scarf. That I'm really proud of, collector's scarf. I feel very special. And, but I, a couple of interesting stats about what's going to happen to our region when this happens. So we, we hosted our guest, for our guest speaker last night, was Peter Tomazawa. He's the CEO of SEA 2026, which is working to host the World Cup when it comes to town. And it's because it, the tournament is growing to 48 teams this year, it will be the largest tournament of any kind ever on the planet Earth. So that's pretty amazing. I'm not, excuse me, I said this year, in 2026, 48 teams. So Seattle is going to be one of the 16 cities in North America to host. And we expect 1 million additional visitors during that one-month period in the summer of 2026 to come to this region. So might be fun to work on, I mean, all the cities are really thinking ahead to how they can accommodate and host these 1 million people that will be coming to town. So that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you to Deputy Mayor Buxton, and she does have a rocket arm. It was my pleasure last year to dunk Councilmember Nutty. In fact, I think I paid a couple of extra people to do it, too. Yes, Ram Fest was awesome. Fell into emceeing the program and really enjoyed it. Just seeing our youth and their excitement entering their high school years, some of their best times of their lives, which we'd all agree was exciting. I want to thank Lynn Cashman for filling out our application and getting, getting the votes of tonight for the human services. I spoke to her on the phone. I think she'll make an excellent addition to that group. I wanted the Citizens Advisory Committee to know that staff is reviewing the content of the information, and will use it appropriately as they see fit, and we'll, we'll further discuss at a later time. Two football games. Mount Rainier will host Kent Lake at Highline High School Friday. Federal Way, of course, is going to be a little tougher visit because they're traveling to Yakima on Saturday, but we wish both teams well. The last thing I wanted to talk about was that it's, it's, it's been, it's come out in the public that Bartels will be closing September 14th, the one on 216th and Pack Highway. It is with sadness we see them leaving the community. I do find solace in knowing that they, they still have their distribution center in our business park, which does also bring jobs and has been a definite benefit. I have heard some of our residents wonder why this is and blame entities like the city with fault. As someone who has been in the retail business for decades, I feel obligated to share a little bit about this. Bartels, a lot of people may not know, was purchased by Rite Aid. All businesses with, will access, all businesses will, once they take over a business, they're going to look at the locations. They're going to look at duplication. They're going to look at volume, sales per square foot, profitability, theft, and of course, the proximity of other locations, especially, especially when acquisitions come into play. In addition, many people are using mail-order prescriptions and shop online rather than go to stores. Rite as, Rite Aid has over the past year closed several locations. One recently made the news in Seattle. And being somebody that works for Nordstrom, we recently made the news because we closed two stores in downtown San Francisco, much on the same criteria. It's unfortunate, but it's, it's, it's the tenure. I want you to remind, remember everybody that the majority of the council, we've supported the business community. We did grants to offset COVID and some vandalism and compensation for the boil order and the lost opportunity of men businesses. But in this case, unfortunately, business is business, and there's little the city can do in this regard. I will say this, the city's been lucky, and this is really one of the significant closures we've had, where other cities have had several. And that needs to be taken in context. And the currents is coming out, mailing to everybody's location. There's one there, and I think it's already hit online. But one of the things I tell the community, and I, I'm talking to the residents, if you're still listening, is eat and shop locally. Please, the best thing you can do is do business in our town. The dollars stay here. The employment is relevant. And the revenues that are generated, they're, they float all boats. As an economic master that you are, you would certainly agree that that's one of the best things that the residents can do. Make every effort you can to eat in a restaurant and shop in a shop. Our next meeting will be September 14th for a regular city council meeting. And do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Got a second from a couple people. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Meeting is adjourned.